Alden Coriga.
Here.
Hollerin.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Maranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarr.
Here.
Trombley.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Presentee Pedro.
Here.
Form present.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December 17th meeting and place them on file? An introduction, please, in a second. Rebecca and Dewan. All in favor signify, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of December 31st and place it on file? Can I have an introduction, please? Jane, second by Calvin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. The two communications that were introduced last week. One is the Record of Annual Completion of Training Report for the members of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Audit Report for 2018. Can I have an introduction in a second? Place these on file. Eileen. Rebecca. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Now, there is a list of bills on your desks. Any questions?
Is there anything new?
There's always something, though. Let's see. We have a new assessor, Jim Smith. Any questions?
I just carried out the grant.
Yes, sure.
Lots of them need to be filed.
Let's see.
Religious. On the 2020 on the right, towards the, in the middle, in the right column in the middle.
Yes, $1,296.
It's for the code enforcement officer to do his annual certifications.
Come on, let's see that. Oh, it's down below, sorry. Yes, that's where they have their annual meeting and they update themselves on the code enforcement rules.
And the Ferry Street Bridge, remind me of that, CSX?
That is towards the, is that the CSX?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's paid for through the grant.
Right.
And it's just, you know, further along the stage we're getting that done.
Why was Jane Trombley on there?
Because Jane took the course offered to new elected officials in Saratoga, was it?
No, not that fancy. It was in Albany.
Albany. And that was just for the registration fee. In that case, can I have an introduction in a second, please? Okay, the bill. Rebecca, second. Shersha. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
Okay, we'll start with the resolutions from last week. First is appointing the Commissioner of Fees.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sarr.
Aye.
Alden Coriga. Trombley.
Aye.
Aye.
Hollerin. Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Lewis. Wolf.
Aye.
Aye.
Maranti. Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Aye.
Nisan. Carry.
Aye.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the parking violations of
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Bureau accounts.
Aye.
A roll call vote, please.
Trombley.
Aye.
Alden Coriga. Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Hollerin. Wolf.
Aye.
Aye.
Lewis. Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Aye.
Maranti. Carry.
Aye.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the contingency account
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds from the contingency account to to fund the ADA coordinator. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
fund the ADA coordinator.
Aye.
A roll call vote, please.
Lewis. Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Aye.
Maranti. Hollerin.
Aye.
Aye.
Nisan. Lewis.
Aye.
Aye.
Rosenthal. Maranti.
Aye.
Aye.
Sarr. Nisan.
Aye.
Aye.
Trombley. Rosenthal.
Aye.
Aye.
Walker. Sarr.
Aye.
Aye.
Wolf. Trombley.
Aye.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Wolf.
The next resolution appoints David Conrithberg as a member of the Conservation Advisory Council.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution appoints David Conrithberg as a member of the Conservation Advisory Council. A roll call vote, please. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga. Alden Coriga.
Aye. Aye.
Hollerin. Hollerin.
Aye. Aye.
Lewis. Lewis.
Aye. Aye.
Maranti. Maranti.
Aye. Aye.
Nisan. Nisan. Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds. Yeah. Bye.
Number five.
This is, this is just for one particular officer?
No, this is to the, from the increase in their salary. That was agreed upon, 1.5% increase.
This is agreed upon, but it was with David's contract?
This was agreed upon in the contract negotiation, yes.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the acceptance of donations to the Hudson Youth Department. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum understanding accepting donations from the Friends of Hudson Youth to the Youth Department. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
Before we go on to the new resolutions, I want to remind you that we're still looking for volunteers. I think we may have the Conservation Advisory Council almost full. But the council still hasn't appointed its quota for the tourism board. So members of the council or the public would like to apply or suggest somebody they think would make a good member, please contact me, councilpres@cityofhudson.org. Okay. Now to the resolutions. Let me just make a quick comment. Last week, we spent a number of more time than was useful on the whole minority issue. Much of what happened up until that point was illegitimate in the sense that it wasn't following proper legal established procedure. Mind you, that there's some debate about what is established procedure for how these things are determined, and they are not determined by the council president. That being said, we now have certainly to make sure that in the future, we have no such confusion. This resolution establishes the process for naming majority-minority parties and leaders for the common council. Any questions from the council? Dominic.
In the resolution, in an event that there is two parties, for example, that are different, how is that then resolved into minority?
According to the resolution, the future common council president will decide if there's two members of two minority parties. And of course, then the council at large would have to vote in support of that.
Okay, so the president then will make an appointment, and then the full council votes?
Yeah.
Even though they're not part of that party?
It's the same way you're voting on now.
Yeah, it's the same way we're voting now.
It's an acknowledgement.
Right.
It's an acknowledgement, someone has been done.
Yeah. Any other questions? Jane.
When does the voting, well, in this case, for the majority party leader take place?
When does it take place?
When did it?
When the caucus happens, I guess.
A bigger one?
Soon, the caucus, that's not mine, to the chairman.
Oh, okay. I don't think it happened before.
Excuse me?
I said, I'm not sure we had an election.
We did.
We did? Okay. I missed it.
Can we?
Thank you.
Can I get an introduction in a second? Tiffany and Jane. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
A question before a vote. So how does?
I think we're voting now.
Then I vote now?
Okay.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
No.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution just confirms that we're naming a majority leader, and Rebecca will be minority leader, based on the weight of findings. Any discussion?
Sure, of course, you know I'm going to discuss.
Sure.
So, for the past week, you know, there's been two different, you know, of course, conflicting opinions, et cetera. I was, my parents, I'm the son of my parents, who taught me to be a decent, fair, caring person, who when I see wrong, I step in and say it's wrong. And I think how this went down was totally wrong and inappropriate. And I think if, and I'm going to respect the findings of the attorney, I think this could have been avoided if this was the first step and how it started in the beginning, that the process was done. I hope moving forward, the process, there's individuals that may learn by this process and maintain it fair, equitable, and transparent, so this doesn't happen again to, I've got many emails in terms of how this violated some trust in terms of elected officials, that how this is done. So moving forward, I hope we all learn a valuable lesson on transparency and how to do the right thing.
Thank you.
And I thank my parents.
Oh, sorry. And of course, that was the meaning of the previous resolution, to establish that transparency and procedure for the future. Okay, we have an introduction in a second. Tiffany. Shersha, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
I don't know. I'm ignoring you.
The resolutions.
On what? Minority reason?
Yes.
I thought you just told me I'm excluded.
No, 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 not from the, this is a resolution that had nothing to do with the caucus voting. This is for us to accept the caucus voting.
Oh, I'm going to say no, because I think there's more work to be done.
Thank you. Thanks.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
No.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
Okay. The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the fire department. If there's no questions, can I have an introduction in a second? Question or an introduction?
Introduction.
Okay, Shersha and Dewan. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
Excuse me. The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds within the 2019 Treasury budget. So this is for last year. If there's no questions? Question?
Well, I came to ask whether, or it's more a comment. It's funny to be new in January and voting to approve budget, you know, budget issues that have happened during a time in which, like, while I could have been going to meetings all the time, I wasn't, you know, as a citizen.
I understand what you're saying.
So I'm just wondering if there's a chance to, not to not do this now, but that, you know, the budget meetings and things would happen more like at the beginning, or somehow take place in a time in which, you see what I'm saying?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
This has brought up their findings?
No.
The subject was generally, these are the chargebacks.
Right.
And the treasurer doesn't know because bills come in at the end of the year. Some of them don't come in until January, February, but for accounting purposes, they have to put it against the fiscal year where the expense was incurred, so.
So it's not, and you can always vote, I mean, you can even vote on minutes that you weren't part of.
Right.
So, I mean, if you don't want to vote on it, you don't have to.
I mean, you know, I'm not meaning to call it a big star, just comment.
No, I understand. Is there an introduction in a second? Jane and John. A roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds to meet 2019 obligations, and this is a similar situation where there wasn't enough money for the healthcare buyouts, and now they have to put this against 2019. Can I have an introduction in a second? Unless there's question, I'm sorry, did you have a question, Tiffany?
I'm sorry, I was just mumbling to myself how there wasn't enough. I thought this was all.
Well, because sometimes, sometimes we don't plan for who, precisely, and know exactly who's going to take the buyout or not. Yes, Jane?
I just want to clarify that this is money that's going out of 2020 back into 19 to cover the buyouts?
No.
No.
This is 2019 money going to 2019.
This is just 2019 back and forth.
Correct.
Just among these categories.
Yep.
I got it, thank you. Sorry.
An introduction in a second, please. Tiffany, Dewan, roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
This next resolution authorizes transfer of funds within the DPW Cemetery Water and Sewer Department accounts for 2019. And again, it's internal transfers from 2019 to 2019.
I have a question.
Sure.
When it says street maintenance.
Yes.
In the third paragraph, maybe you can answer, maybe someone else could, but what does that consist of, street maintenance? Is that sidewalk? Is that?
No, I think it means.
Water main?
No, I think it means street cleaning. What else could it be?
Hot holes.
Hot holes.
Hot holes.
And nothing to do with sidewalks?
Right. And of course, as we all know, cemetery, water, and sewer, those values can't be sent elsewhere by law. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Calvin, second. Rebecca, a roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of $60,000 from the cemetery contingency fund to the cemetery equipment fund. And that $60,000 represents the money paid by the Hudson Islamic community to create a dedicated section in the cemetery reserved for members of that community. Any questions? Can I have an introduction in a second, please? John. Shersha, roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the transfer of funds between the senior center accounts. This is also reconciling 2019 budget accounts. Any questions? And if there are any questions, can I have the introduction and a second? Rebecca, second. Jane, roll call vote, please.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The next resolution is yet another interdepartmental transfer in the youth department. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Shersha and Calvin, roll call voters.
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
The last resolution is authorizing a budget amendment for the youth department personnel costs, and I've been asked by the mayor, do you would like to make a statement?
Yes, David. Thank you, Tom, for recognizing me. For this particular resolution, I know there was a lot of spirited debate in the last meeting and also in the finance meeting. After going over the budget and talking to all the parties involved, I thought the best effort from the city would be to cut the resolution in half into two parts, so that, you know, we'll allocate half the funding now. And then, I know Alderman Eileen asked for data, which Nick has provided some of that data, but also, this gives us time to get the results that we're looking for as well. I also want to empower the youth committee to ask for specific goals that they want to see from the youth center and help that vision as well. So I think this is a good compromise and a good gesture by the city to move things forward.
Thank you. Can I have an introduction in a second? Dewan, Shersha, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Coriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Trombley.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Aye.
Carry.
Okay, we have the local laws sitting on our desks. Tonight, I'd like to schedule our hearing for the next informal meeting. This is not the mayor's hearing, this is the council's hearing, and I guess we'll do both of them that night of the informal meeting. In the meantime, any old or new business that the council would like to raise? John?
I have a complaint from a constituent that must be in the audience tonight about, it pertains to some of our noise ordinances for construction in the mornings. There's some disparity between, I think this involves work by the library, I'd like to have my friend Theo Anthony attest to this. It's about certain decibel levels in construction in the morning for things that are necessary for infrastructure, I believe you're told. I'd like, I think we should address in the code, so it could be more of a remedy for these, or an earlier threshold, I guess, so we can kind of protect the sanctity of our residents having a good sleep in the morning, but Theo could probably speak to this more clearly.
I think that should come definitely, start at the DPW committee. Before Theo speaks, I realize I skipped something. We need to lay these proposed laws on our desk before we have that hearing next. Excuse me, a motion for a public hearing. Oh, okay. So first, let's go with the September moratorium law. Can I have a motion and a second to lay it on our desk? Tiffany. Rebecca. And next, a motion and an introduction, I mean, sorry, an introduction and a second to lay the lodging tax amendment on our desks. Jane and Calvin. Now, for those hearings, I also need an introduction in a second. Rebecca. Dewan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Now, Theo, did you want to, getting back to where we were, did, what was it? You're recognized.
Thank you for recognizing me. My name's Theo Anthony, I'm a full-time resident in Hudson. I live on Short Street, across the street from the Galvin Armory. For the last two weeks, every morning, starting right at the dot on 7:00 a.m., we've been woken up by construction, not light construction, but jackhammers and concrete saws. I'm here speaking on behalf of not just me, but, you know, people I live with, my downstairs neighbors, the entire block, and on Fifth Street. Everyone in the neighborhood is talking about it. No one is getting any sleep. We tried speaking with construction crews to get them to start a little bit later. They didn't want, they told us to talk to Galvin. We wrote numerous emails to Galvin and his crew, those went unresponded to. We were finally led up to the point where we filed a noise complaint with the police, who brought a decibel meter out. The decibel level was above the 75 that decibels ordained under the city, the code. They didn't want, they told us to talk to Galvin. We wrote numerous emails to Galvin and his crew. Those went unresponded to. We were finally led up to the point where we filed a noise complaint with the police who brought a decibel meter out. The decibel level was above the 75 decibels ordained under the city, the code. However, because it is filed under utility work, there's no decibel level so long as it starts after 7:00 AM. So there was no recourse. We've kind of done all our options. We called the code enforcement. Those calls weren't returned either. So, yeah, I'm just coming to you guys. 7:00 AM is really early to get woken up by a jackhammer and a concrete saw. There's a lot of elderly people in our neighborhood. There's a lot of young children, and we've all been talking about it. And I just really hope there's something we can do. I think that, I understand that there's a lot of development and that's really exciting, but I hope that doesn't come at the expense of alienating the people who actually live here, you know, full-time. So, yeah, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. Theo, what time you said this was?
7:50.
It starts right at 7:00 AM, but they start moving the excavators in at 6:30. There's the construction, the code says, and I'm going off the top of my head here, that they can start at 7:00 AM so long as it's under 65 decibels. If it's non-emergency utility work, that can go up to, or like, it can go up to 75, but the utility work they're doing doesn't have a decibel limit on it, which is the problem. So basically, as the police officer, the sergeant said to us, they can basically do whatever they want, starting at 7:00 AM.
And was that part of the permit that they can start early? That was issued by code enforcement? Code enforcement, do you know?
I, I don't know. I mean, I would assume that since they're allowed to, I mean, they're working on a storm drain, so that fall, it falls under utility work, so I assume that if, since they have a free pass through utility work, that it would be filed under the permit.
I think it's all under the code. Code dictates, the city code dictates.
Our attorney suggested, that might not be accurate, but we'll definitely look into it and talk about it with Craig, who enforces it.
Yeah, I wish you didn't have to come to this. I wish, like, I mean, I should just add, they're out of there by 2:00 every day. It would be, you know, kind and respectful if they could just push their day back and be out of there by 3:00 and let the entire neighborhood sleep for another hour. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council before we open wide? Calvin?
Yes, I just wanted to speak to the tourism board. As the chair of the tourism board, I'm working with the mayor's office to develop a vision for the tourism board. And to piggyback off what Tom mentioned, the council will select four members in addition to the mayor's office selecting four members. And the board is seeking members that are passionate about Hudson and have a commitment to Hudson and are looking to advance local businesses and, you know, find a common ground between the community and tourism and not necessarily favor one of the other. From my time canvassing, you know, entering my second term, I gained a greater appreciation for local business. And, you know, I think it's something that we need to maintain within Hudson. And so, you know, that in mind, you know, I just wanted to put that message out there to those of you who may be interested in joining the tourism board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we go number 15?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, did we go number 15?
Yes. Since now I'm in the councils, you know, members of the council have more comments, we're open to the public now. Yes, Reverend Cross?
I'd just like to ask you, do you know how many black landmarks we have in Hudson? Does any, you don't have to answer that, because I don't know anymore. But a couple of years ago, we sold one for taxes. And I turned the corner, it's 241 Columbia Street. And I turned the corner towards the river a couple of months ago, and I saw a hole in the roof, okay? And a couple of weeks ago, there was no roof. You know, I mean, I don't know what you can do about that, but kind of, kind of hurt me and was painful, you know? This church was probably one of the first churches, not only in the city, but in the county, you know? And I mentioned it, I mentioned it within the last three or four years, three or four times, but it just passed on. I would not like to see anything like that happen again. You know, Tiffany was, can I call you Tiffany out there? Tiffany was one of the people that stood up and said, hey, look, let's look into this. And a few people said, oh, there's nothing we can do. You are the common council. This is the mayor. Somebody could do something. You know, somebody could do something, you know? So I'm asking you, I don't know what you can do now. I don't know what you can do now, but maybe you can put it in your pocket and save it, you know, because this, like I say, it's history. It's history. It's black history. It's Hudson history. And something's wrong with that picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Ron? I would just like to speak in support of Reverend Cross and say just generally that when we're thinking about historic preservation, it's not simply an aesthetic question, it's a question of history and culture. And obviously, that includes African-American historic and cultural sites, and I think we need to have a broader view of preservation.
I agree. And I hope if this is a case of demolition by neglect, that we can stop it somehow. Again, it's another thing I should talk to Craig Higginbill. Yes, Matt?
Yes, we have spoken with Reverend Cross about this. And we have looked at the church. The fact is that it's architecturally very nice, and it would qualify as a landmark on that basis. But even more, it has a history. It's the Shiloh Baptist Church. It has, it has moved onto, into what was a synagogue on Warren Street. And it, we don't know the history very well, but the fact is that it is an important landmark for the city of Hudson. And it recognizes the fact that we've had a long history here of black settlement. And I think that they should be recognized for their contribution to our society and raising our level of justice. And, you know, this is very important, and I think we're very conscious of it now. But being conscious requires action, and I think we need to act soon while the building is still standing.
Are we talking now about Shiloh Baptist on Warren Street?
No, the one... But they have moved there. It's the same congregation.
It used to be a synagogue.
Right. You know? But, you know, we should recognize this as an important landmark for the city of Hudson. I think if we're concerned about tourism, some people may want to go there and see it for its historic significance, and they may want to visit. I think it can contribute in a lot of ways. But the main contribution is recognizing what the black people in our community have done and how steadfast they've been in trying to raise themselves with the help of others. But I think they've been very, you know, they've accomplished a lot. And it should be preserved physically.
Thank you. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, can the cameraman make a comment?
You gotta get on camera. You gotta get on camera.
Well, I'll, I'll figure it out. Anyway. At the very least, I think we need a historic panel, you know, a board, a metal board, tracing the history and a little diagram of the streets where it all began. Shiloh on that little church that we tried to buy, by the way. And I gotta criticize the city of Hudson. They were not very helpful. We tried to buy it, what was it, three years ago? And it got away from us because, you know, the money people invaded. And it's a crime that that building is now falling apart. I just can't believe it. I have to say that. I really have to say that. I am very disappointed by what didn't happen. Anyway, at the very least, no matter what we do, we need a panel, you know, a little marker with the streets marked and a little markers for where the churches are and how they began. I mean, that was the beginning of the Shiloh Baptist Church. People ought to know that. That's it. Back to my camera.
Thank you, Dan. And I think we should approach HPC, the Hudson Preservation Committee, about this as well. Anyone else in the audience, any comments? Yes?
Houston, 558 State Street. Is this the right forum to offer suggestions for changes to the code? Amendments?
Well, we've had one already from Theo. How many is it gonna be?
Two, quick ones.
Okay.
For the past three months, every time I walk out of the front door of the place where I live, 558 State Street, and look straight across the street, there's a sign in the lawn put up by the construction company that's fixing 555 State Street. And I measured it the day after it went up. It measures six feet by four feet, it's 24 square feet. It's obscene. And it's black with white lettering on it. It has no place in the neighborhood. Nobody should have to see it. Nobody should have to see it daily. So I looked up on the code, and it turns out the code allows for construction companies to put signs up on yards 32 square feet in size. It's just absurd. I don't know, I don't know how that happened, because 32 square feet is just, just out of hand. If you look up the code also for real estate signs, it only allows eight square feet. So I'm suggesting that you make them both the same. There's no need for a construction sign to be as large as 32 square feet, certainly not 24, eight square feet for both real estate and construction. If anybody can come up with a good reason why a construction sign should be 32 square feet or any more than eight square feet, I'd like to hear it.
What's the next thing?
Another sign issue. Maybe we're all familiar with the mural, so-called mural that went up at the corner of Park Place on Warren Street, in the side of the building there?
I think it's a genuine mural.
Okay, we'll call it a mural. I object to some of it. So I looked up, I called Craig and wondered if they had gotten a permit to put that mural on the wall. And he said, no, they haven't. And I said, well, do they need a permit? And he says, well, apparently they do not. And I said, well, I object to it, and I'd like you to talk to them. And Craig said that I was not the only one that called him objecting to it, but there's nothing that he could do, was Craig's word. Because in the code, it, under signs, it does not mention murals. It mentions five or six other types of signs, but it doesn't mention murals. So I don't necessarily want to see the whole thing removed, but if the code's gonna be complete, it's gotta, it's gotta include murals under signs. And of course, I looked up the code for Ithaca, New York, who seemed to be a model for a lot of things we're doing. And of course, it mentions murals. So it's covered, and there's, there's no reason it shouldn't be covered in ours. And they should have to get a permit for that, or anybody should have to get a permit to put a mural on the wall, because, you know, next thing you know, somebody puts a swastika on a wall, we can't do anything about it, or, you know? Well, you know what, you know what, you know what I'm talking about. Nobody should be able to just paint anything on any wall, especially on Warren Street. So my suggestion is to change the code and add murals to the signs. What's that?
It's a group of artists have all contributed to at least, it looks like, 10 different things. They're all, some are abstract, some are not. Well, thank you.
So what's the next step?
How is, how might it be changed? Well, I'll probably start by trying to change the First Amendment that allows for certain types of public expression. Beyond that, I'm not sure.
But is there a question? Who changed it?
The council?
Okay. So what's the next step?
For you?
No, I don't have anything else to say. I just want to know if it's gonna be done or not.
I have this thing in the question, just like, what, what happened with...
What's the process, Tom?
I'm sorry.
What happens with public comments?
Well, it's someone on the council would have to take it up and bring it to a committee and move forward.
I believe he says he's from the fifth ward, so he could talk to his aldermen and take it from there. Excuse me, the fourth ward, whatever ward he's in, his representatives are here tonight that can talk to him tonight and come up with a plan.
Or not.
Or not.
They're not obligated to, yeah, go forth with something that you want.
The freedom of speech.
So, okay, so my, my older person might bring it up, and it would be voted on right away, or?
No, to go through the process.
Can you tell me what the process is quickly?
You just, you go to your alderman, see if they're willing to put forth a resolution through a committee, and then eventually, if it gets through the committee, it comes to the council at large, where we vote on it.
What committee?
Oh, would be, yeah, would have to be a local law, considering it's changing the code. That's for you to turn, I guess it would be DPW. Yes, Tiffany?
Well, I have a comment, but to Bill, I would suggest, since you said other people have made these complaints, this is the first time that I'm hearing about it. And if you know who these other people are...
I know who they are.
Or maybe you talk to your neighbors... Maybe you talk to your neighbors and see who has the same issues as you, and maybe start a petition, so that way the complaint isn't just from you, and it would be from a numerous amount of people, so it would be substantial.
It's so nonsensical, it's a sign, and we can't do anything about it.
Unless it's commercial speech, it cannot really be regulated. It is a form of artistic expression that is highly protected. Some towns and cities do regulate it in terms of ownership and who has the right to put it on. I'm not even giving opinion, all that. I have been engaged in these issues a little bit on other questions, but basically, political and artistic speech is highly protected unless it is either obscene, commercial speech, it's very difficult to regulate.
Yes, Matt?
Yes, the mural side, because that is a constitutional question. I think that signage should be regulated more stringently. This is a beautiful town, and it doesn't need to be obscured by gigantic signs. I mean, you, sometimes I feel like they would be willing to put up a sign saying what a landmark is, but it would hide it, you know? And I think signs here are very oversized for what they need to be. They should be brought down in scale.
Thank you. And you know that signs are highly regulated within historic districts.
The size is rather generous.
Is it?
Yes.
I know that, I know they make a judgment at HPC meetings, you have to present your sign.
I know.
I knew you were gonna, but I was letting you know. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, sorry, Ron?
Sorry, are we now hearing just general comments on the meeting? Are we about to adjourn, or?
I think that was the idea.
I would want to say something about the vexed question of the majority minority leader.
I think we've settled it, we don't really...
Well, I really, well, I'm not satisfied, let me put it that way. I think, as I can, I unfortunately did not see the text either of your Resolution Number 8 or your adopted rule of order Number 16 before this meeting. My understanding is that you adopted these measures... My understanding is that you adopted these measures today, or they were posted online today, and then under these recently adopted measures, you moved to choose the majority of minority leader.
No, it's not what I.
Okay, well, correct, okay, correct. But what I would like to say also is that, with a quick glance of the text, given how closely the text relies on New York State election law and ties these positions to party, I really think, and I'm glad there will be more occasion for debate about this, because I don't think it should be done hastily. I think the fact that a lot of time was spent on it last week is an indication that there's a lot of interest and a need for a lot of discussion. And I would like to see the legal rationale for the proposal. I hope that will be posted somewhere.
If there's no more comments from the organs, I would have a comment. Well, I just want to recognize Rebecca Wolf tonight and say congratulations for your role and your position as minority leader. And I believe that you are the first in New York State as a working families party member to hold this seat, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks. I did want to, can I just say a quick thing? Well, I'm just, I do think it is important to, you know, as a intervention in the, in the two-party system that, that is so dysfunctional, that alternative parties and minority parties be really recognized within even the local structure. So I'm happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to acknowledge Pierre Jun, who's in the audience.
In there, yeah.
The other night at the Brayton Barrows Martin Luther King annual celebration at Shiloh, he was awarded the Interfaith Council MICA Award for his scholarship, I believe, of $500, in honor of what already has been accomplished. And with that, I will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Tiffany, I, I think you want to keep it to it?